Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, September 26, 2022. Call this meeting to order at 6:30. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present. I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, there is nothing under general. That brings us to committee correspondence to council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Bit of a Saco Lordship Transit met last Thursday. Couple of items to update you on. The trolley system this summer had an excellent ridership over the course of the summer, so that was good news for B-Soup Transit. The fixed route ridership is continuing to increase. We are about 70% of pre-pandemic level, so that's another good indicator hopefully to continue. We have a grant for $2 million that will be acquiring two new e-buses to add to our fleet. We already have two, so we will be one of the, I think it's the only transit organization in the state to have four e-buses once they're deployed. So those are coming. Takes a while to get them. And then lastly, the need for drivers remains, so if you or anybody you know has any interest in driving a bus, we would appreciate you referring them to B-Soup Transit for some discussion on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondents to council? Moving on to item six, public comment. First up from the sign-in sheet is Christian Stepi. Again, for all commenters, please state your name, address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Christian Stepi.
You can come up to the podium, sir. And please speak right into the microphone so that it picks up clearly. And we won't start the time until you state your name and address.
Let me take a big breath here. Christian Stepi, 25, Toll Pines Drive, Saco. Going to try to do this real quick from a, touching base on this moratorium chatter that's come about, heard about it Friday, read about it this afternoon. I've got some bullet point statements from the Maine Association of Railtors. I'm just going to quick read them and then touch base on a few concerns as a resident of Saco. Association believes that local planning and zoning policies should allow for development of housing, and we oppose exclusionary zoning, no growth ordinances in moratoriums, including retroactive moratoriums, as such laws and policy limit the supply of housing, restrict economic and investment opportunities, and contribute to higher housing costs. Moratoriums limit economic growth in an area, slowing production, supply, and housing industries that supports jobs. The lack of affordable housing in Maine is a serious problem that warrants wide-ranging policies. There are many ways to approach the problem, but we believe only effective approach must take a holistic look at the barriers to increasing supply and physically building more affordable housing. The fundamental cause of the affordable housing problem is lack of supply. We simply do not have enough affordable homes in Maine, and we need to build more either through entirely new homes or by modifying existing homes. Going to fly to now from a personal aspect as a resident, plus I manage an office. It's got about 72 realtors in it within Saco. Numerous of them live in Saco. They work extremely hard to pound the pavement, looking for deals, help buyers, sellers, et cetera. My biggest concern reading this proposed moratorium, one, is temporary timeout to discussion and plan. It's under section seven. And then there's a moratorium period and any extensions thereof. Who has been on the council since 2002? Anybody? That is when the Route 112 bypass corridor commission, they started to do their research on that. Nineteen years before we had an acceptable, in 2021, a plan was accepted for that road. I'm not feeling too confident on anything City of Saco related that leaves an open-ended where things could be reviewed and continued on. I wasn't going to get into this aspect of it, but it was referenced in this paper where it did talk about the short term or what's happened with the schools. And then I honestly can't believe if something of this capacity would even reference asylum seekers, because that's just a snapshot in time. They were thrown on us. So we can't use a snapshot of time or make decisions that are going to impact every single taxpayer in the City of Saco based upon a snapshot in time. You're going to look at trends and so on. We had the zoning about two years or two and a half years ago, the City of Saco started to make changes to the zoning ordinances. That was supposed to initiate and happen. Then there were delays so that they could fine tune and tweak it even more. And then it was finally set forward in action on, I believe it was January of 2021. And here we are, less than, you know, a year later, two years, whatever it is, and we're thinking about doing a moratorium. Don't stop me, please. Doing a moratorium at this time when we have the last little bit of building traction that we have before we see an economic shift that's probably going to last 12 to 18 months. You know, we've got subcontractors that do their shopping on their lunch breaks, whatever, in the area. If we put a stop to this now, you're not just, it's not about infrastructure. Whether we have an issue on Route 5 on the old Kimball Health Center land, whatever it is, deal with that, but don't put a stop to any of this. These builders, you know, brought so many jobs to the area over the course of the last three years. Do not put a stop to it. I think establishing a moratorium would be, it should be like the nuclear football or the last resort after everything has been done. And I don't think anybody up here can say, we have exhausted all policies or all avenues before we do this moratorium. I can guarantee you, nobody can say that. So at that point, we should not even be contemplating on the October, whatever, to put that as an actionable item to vote on. It should not happen at all.
Thank you. Up next is Mary Elizabeth Carlo.
My name is Mary Elizabeth Carolyn, and I live at 54th Street. And he's going to be a hard act to follow. But I'm in favor of the moratorium because I just feel that Saco is growing, and it's growing very rapidly. And where I live, our water pressure is horrible. And we've been told that, you know, the roads were going to be paved and all these things were going to get done, and it hasn't been getting done. And I, every day that I go into work, I have to go in five minutes earlier, 10 minutes earlier, 20 minutes earlier because the traffic is getting horrendous. I work with someone that came, was going to Biddeford today, and he says, I hate going to Biddeford because I've got to go down into all the traffic in Saco. And he says, it's just ridiculous. It takes me a good half hour to get anywhere. And I just live off of 112. And I just, yes, I understand we need housing. I understand that. But I just feel that if we don't take care of the infrastructure before we start all this development or continue on with the development that we're at this present time, we're just going to be running around putting out fires. And as a new resident in the City of Saco, I chose to live here because it seemed like a nice place to live. And I really don't want to regret having purchased a house here. I bought one that I hope to live in until I die. And I just, I'm afraid that I'm going to get squeezed out of this nice little town I live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Rob Biggs.
Rob Biggs, 92 Middle Street. Mayor Doyle, city councilors, and city administrator Kane Reich, thank you for your time. Firstly, I want to say that I'm extremely disappointed and embarrassed for Saco by the recent actions regarding an appointment to the planning board. A well-qualified candidate was appointed to sit to the council by the mayor, only to be put down by members of this council while suggesting a different candidate. Starting with a sentence with, "I'm not saying this candidate is not qualified, but does indeed say that you do not feel the candidate is qualified." This council did not know the candidate nor tried to get to know him. The candidate suggested by a council member was also a very good candidate, but not the one put forth by the mayor. It is council's job to confirm the candidate appointed by the mayor not to propose other candidates. If an appointed candidate is egregiously wrong for the position, then vote no. Otherwise, your job is to confirm. By your actions, only along with social media raking of the mayor's appointed candidate, who is finally confirmed, has resigned from the planning board. It's a shame that this is the way we welcome individuals who want to serve their new hometown. And we wonder why more people don't want to volunteer their personal time to serve the City of Saco. For future full transparency, I am recommending that when there is an opening to any city board or commission, that the city advertise said opening and have a 30-day period for individuals to apply for consideration. At the end of this period, the mayor and the board or commission chair would have 30 days to review all candidates and select the one that is best qualified for the appointment and confirmation. Secondly, I understand that there is a proposal being put forth this evening to put in place a temporary residential moratorium. As a planning board member, we have been told repeatedly by a few members of the public that we need to pay attention to the recently developed and adopted comp plan as well as the newly revised zoning ordinance as our guide to planning for Saco. Our comp plan calls for smart development where infrastructure is in place, and our zoning ordinance is our roadmap to how and where Saco can be developed. I feel this moratorium is directly telling the planning department and the planning board that they are not doing their jobs effectively, and city council is now going to step in and proactively engage in setting disciplined future land use policies. Both the comp plan and the zoning ordinance took a tremendous amount of effort and time by city staff, consultants, volunteer citizens of Saco, as well as input from the citizens at large. Do we really need yet one more study? If you feel that the planning board members are not fulfilling their duties, then you, as city council, need to remove all members and rebuild the board or take over their duties. We on the planning board do not take this responsibility lightly, and we understand how the issues of school capacity, public safety are affected by development. As Saco grows, we need to address these issues directly. We cannot shut the city down for residential development while we think and wait to hire more police, fund and build an additional fire station, build a new school, a freeway interchange, and new roads, which are all necessary. All these projects have to be addressed and be done as we develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Kevin Roach.
Hi, Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road. First off, let me just, I have three hats tonight. One, put on the Save Our Shore Saco Bay hat. Thank you for getting the dredge authority letter of intent on tonight's agenda. Please report that Wells Council voted for their letter, and Scarborough has just sent in their letter. I just got that into you, Brian, on email today. So we want to work collaboratively with Biddeford and Old Orchard as well. We hope that we'll get some sort of sign on with them as well. So we're looking for a county vote, October, I think we're targeting the October 19 vote. So appreciate as much support as we can get. And finally, once and for all, own a dredge, take that hat off, put the school construction site hat on. I'd like to thank the council for prior action for keeping the Claire Properties open for the schools, because we have now come to realize that that is going to be the top site to pursue. And we hope that we're all on the same team to utilize our limited resources to focus on that site while still possibly there's other options running out right now. But I would like to thank this body for seeing ahead that we needed all options on the table, because my personal strategy, and I think the other committee members that might be here tonight, it was an all the above. And I think everyone's top choices fell by the wayside. But we do have a good site out at the Claire Properties. Take that hat off. The third hat is citizen hat. I see this moratorium that's on for debate. I just want to remind two points, everyone who's read the actual draft, there's two points in there that I want, hopefully you debate it tonight as new business and it goes forward, is that, one, we have a lot of new faces on this planning board, and we have a new planner, relatively new planner, with no history in here. So it behooves you guys, no matter what you do with this, to make sure that there is collaboration from the council to the planning staff and not have this disconnect. The second thing that was, I mentioned the moratorium, is there was direct addressing of affordable housing. Don't kid yourselves. These developments that have come in isn't about affordable housing. Okay? So let's not, let's not think that just because we have some more stock in here means it's going to be quote unquote affordable. Okay? So let's address that in your discussions and look forward to seeing what comes out. Thanks.
Thank you. That is the last of the folks that have signed up. If there's anyone who would like to address the council that hasn't signed up, please come forward and
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council. I know we're going to hear about the moratorium later, and I don't know if we'll have an opportunity to speak then, so I wanted to get up now.
You can just state your name and address for the record, please.
I apologize. Lynn Copeland, 526 Ferry Road, Saco. So the issue of housing, and I know it's been a difficult issue in the past where people have not wanted things in their neighborhood. Housing is probably the number one issue we have in the state of Maine. Without housing, and you know, we heard about that they're going to be luxury houses. All right? That's somebody's right if they want to do it. But if you saw the paper, the Press Herald, it had, or was it the New York Times, whatever, there are no starter houses available because people can't afford to buy the next one. So even if they are luxury houses, then the people who are in the moderate houses can move up and make room for the starters, for the kids coming out of college and have a place to work, make room for the workforce that we so desperately need in Maine. And so they don't necessarily have to be affordable. As long as they're housing, we're just looking for an infusion of housing. We have a goal of 2,000 new units, and by having little end runs around the wonderful statute, that's not helpful. I think that we all care about people coming into our community, and that's wonderful. So let's find a way to embrace new people that we have, get some housing in here so people can live. And the fact that, the suggestion that we need more time to go slowly over this growth, I'm very clear that we just did our, you know, the planning and the zoning and all those updates. And I'm pretty sure that these things were out there and could be considered. So I don't know why this last minute effort to undermine the generous town that we have, the city that we have, to include more housing units. Thank you.
You can come up first and then Mike afterwards.
Don Pylon, Glen Haven Circle. The idea of this moratorium just doesn't sit right with me. 180 days of a moratorium specifically in this town hurts contractors, building supply companies, plumbers, electricians, and people that are trying to make a living. When these men and women are working, they're making money, they're buying cars, they're buying accessories for their homes, they generate income, they're spending money in the community. Once you say, we're not going to build, we're not going to build any more houses for 180 days in the City of Saco, we might as well take that sign that, as you're coming into town, that says business-friendly community and put unfriendly business-friendly town in this town. It just sends the wrong message. And you're telling these men and women that are trying to make a living, well, they're not going to be able to, they'll find jobs. There's plenty of work out there. But we should be building houses. And what Lynn said was true. The people that are living in starter homes are, would move, I think, would move into, would want to upgrade and move into a nicer home. And that starter home that they had would allow young families, that Council Johnson talks about, new families want to come into town, but they can't find the right priced homes. That would allow those young families that you keep referring to to come into town. Those are the starter homes. And the people that want to downsize, they would be able to downsize. So it's just moving bodies around in the city. People want to stay in the town. But if we don't give, if we don't, if we don't create a new housing market or a new, some more housing stock, this is not going to, by delaying this, this is just not the right way to do it. And I, that's just all I want to say for now. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mikey, and I live on 59 Boom Road. And I wasn't quite sure I was going to come to this meeting tonight, but I've been involved with this for some, I've been a realtor for over 40 years, very active in the past, then a developer for 40 years, Biddeford Saco and Old Orchard. So whenever I hear the word moratorium, I'm quite concerned about that because it goes against, in general, unless there's a real good reason for it, what I believe in. So having said that, I'm listening to Kevin tonight talk a little bit earlier about what we've been doing with the schools and trying to get that. I've been very close to the school situation, and I understand that we are pretty much at capacity in certain areas. And I understand it's going to be another five years before we have a school standing. And I'm concerned that the language that got changed right towards the end of this committee's line I was on, when we had a whole change of planning board members, planners, assistant planners, Jason's doing a great job, Rob's doing a fine job, but there's a lot of things that are kind of loose-ended out there, and a lot of it's got to do with infrastructure. So getting to that point... So, getting to that point, I see that there's some things, if you get some more large projects where you get, say, 50 to 100 kids in the next three to four years, which possibly could happen, and you don't have the language clear, it could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars in infrastructure that the developer's not going to be responsible for, because it's not worded very clearly right now. Scarborough's is worded very clearly, Scarborough has a growth ordinance. I've been trying to get that language for a couple of years, and we just about had it, and then things fell apart. So, having said that, I'm okay, I've got 15 units ready to go on the side of a project I head over on Route 5 that I understand I was thinking of doing over the winter, and now I'd have to wait till spring. It's not the end of the world. If it means that it would give the planning board a little bit more time to get things in place, to make sure that that language is clear on infrastructure. So, that's my two cents worth. I know there's different sides to it, I've heard everybody's take on it, but that's my take. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to come forward and be heard, please do so.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Broschu. I reside at 257 Buxton Road in Saco. Was hoping to comment just a little bit on the moratorium concept. And we've heard lots of very good comments tonight. And one of the things I wanted to kind of point out is the way I interpret it, it's very carefully drafted, that it's referring to eight units or more on one parcel. So, it's not the everyday home that's being affected. And as a member of the zoning revision committee, we saw lots of changes and lots of dialogue as we worked through that whole process, and it was very in-depth. And time was always an issue. We were getting, felt like we were being pushed, "Keep moving, keep moving, keep moving," as you're trying to work through some of these difficult issues. And like each one of you just kind of reflect back, I noticed on tonight's agenda, there are two items for zoning revision amendments. And it seems like almost every month, there is this constant appeal for zoning revision amendments, that has been revetted by the planning board, gets revetted by you, that's taking time away from the process. And in some ways, I feel like it degrades the validity of the zoning revision process as a whole. It's like, "We did it, we did our effort, but then we'll just keep changing it." During that time, or my time on the planning board, I was actually able to sit through the first master plan development application. And as you guys are all volunteers, as the planning board members are, we struggle, we have to look at what the ordinances are, and how each piece fits, and try to crank that machine cog all the way through. And we realize that the language for master plan development, as it stands in our ordinance, really needs some attention. Mr. Pylon mentioned, you know, "Business Friendly Saco," certified business friendly. I think we'd love to be able to portray that when larger developers come to our community to have that system fixed. I think this concept of taking 180 days to allow staff, planning board members, time to kind of pause on those big applications they're reviewing, and redirect onto the master plan development process, where they fall on the master plan zone. I think Councilor Hatch has done a really fine job at pointing some very key issues that need to be addressed. And we're just asking to buy a little bit of time for the planning board to focus on that. Let them work through these processes without the pressure of always working on applications that kind of get put off. I didn't feel like Saco put forward a very professional image during the Flatland Project, that master plan development. We weren't prepared. And I feel like we've identified that we weren't prepared, and we've kind of left it off to the side. We'll get to it later, we'll get to it later. I think it needs to be addressed. So many things in life, we take timeouts, we take intermissions, take a little time to breathe. We all have very valid points that we can bring to the table. If we can just take the time to articulate and communicate effectively, and provide planning board and staff time to resolve these issues that have shown their heads in the past, I think would be very beneficial. Unfortunately, a lot of our senior or long-serving members have since changed, might need some little outreach to help refresh some of those issues, but I truly feel like it'd be the betterment of our community, because we're not stopping all building. It's eight units or more. It's the ones that could have bigger impacts from these developers. So, I hope at the very least, if you're not able to support this, to try to articulate very clearly why you're not able to support it, because it could be a benefit for all of us. We're all in this, we're all in this ride together. So, let's take a little bit of time, with the pressure off, breathe and communicate. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak before the council, please come forward and be heard.
Hello, Jane Karen, 264 Lincoln Street in Saco. And I am speaking in favor of the temporary residential development moratorium. My reasons are that it includes language and work that would support the planning board and the city staff, it would help bring the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan together, and it also addresses public safety, which is critical at this time, as well as affordable housing, which is critical at this time. I do know that several houses, older homes, right now, I'm so surprised, but it's happening, they're selling for 300, 400, and more thousand dollars. That's not affordable housing. We need to really address specific affordable housing for families, single people. And that, I think, would be addressed in this time to review what the city needs to work on. And as far as smart growth, 2,000-plus units, that brings out, I don't know, probably at least 3,000 vehicles onto the roads. That's a safety issue. You don't have to be living in any particular ward, it's citywide, it's all wards, all citizens that are affected by that. So, I do think that this is a required piece of work that has to be done now. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please come forward and be heard.
Hello, Dan Lasky, 23 Skyline Drive, Saco. Just talking in regards to the temporary moratorium. Previous speakers have done a great job, you know, talking about it. I think what we need to do, I'm in the industry, I'm not against building, what we need to do, though, as a city, is take a look at, just take a breather and take an overall look at, like, what's the ramifications of some of these things we do? If you own a business, before you make a decision, you look at all the different ramifications, good, bad, middle, and then make a decision whether you're going to move forward. I think sometimes we're trying to push things through here too quickly, where we're still five years away from a school, our sewer system is, I don't know how many years away. Traffic, it's a big, big, big issue. I just recently had the pleasure of going door-to-door, talking to 35, 40-plus of my neighbors in my neighborhood. Traffic is, traffic and quality of life in the city of Saco is of utmost concern to them, which I think we all should be concerned with that. And that's, they love Saco, they like the feeling of Saco. We need to grow, but we need to kind of just, this moratorium is just kind of take a step back and say, you know, what's good and what's bad, and maybe move forward, we're going to move forward with a better plan, I think. Especially where we have a relatively new planning board, relatively new planners. I guess that's about it. Building a home, you need, when you build a home, you need to, a home's no good, you can build the best home in the world if it doesn't have a good foundation. So, what I guess what I'm asking is, take a little bit of time, six months, and again, it's not stopping building completely, just, you know, eight units or more, to, let's get that foundation good, you know, the best we can, and then we can move forward. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to address the council, please come forward and be heard.
Hi, good evening. I'm Inga Brown, and I live at 161 Simpson Road. I'd like to also comment on the temporary residential growth moratorium. I find that this is a tremendous opportunity for larger conversations that are inclusive, that are collaborative, that are collegial, and I can see a lot of appetite for clarity of language, improving our zoning ordinance. We walk the walk, oh, excuse me, we talk the talk of smart growth here in Saco, and I think that everyone is on board with that, but can we really walk the walk? So, I'm concerned that we continue to build the plane as we're flying it. I'm concerned that we do things not in the most thoughtful and carefully thought-out type of discussion and process. I find the draft of this moratorium very proactive. I think it's very measured, I think it's very even-handed. I think that no one at all is questioning the ability or the dedication of the planning board. We are one community, we are all here because we care about Saco. I know how hard you all work, I know how hard the planning board works, and I would like to really see a greater openness to transparent conversations, let's talk about these difficult issues. The zoning ordinance needs work. There are lots of broken places, and it's time to clean up. It's time to clean our house of Saco. To my high school students, I often talk about the importance of slowing down, and we talk about the canoeing term, backfaring. So, if you're familiar with that canoeing technique, you slow down, and you tread some water so that you can make a path down the river. Do we know where we're going? Do we know where the obstacles are? And I find this opportunity to slow down very healthy. I think it's good for our community, I think it's good for what we want Saco to unfold, how we want our community to unfold. I think that six months is not very long, and while some people are concerned about the tradespeople who might be temporarily hurt by this, I think for me, it's a holistic vision. All of Saco, all of Saco is hurt if we don't improve this process now, and I put my support behind this initiative, so thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak on this item, please come forward and be heard. You only get one opportunity to speak at the dais. There's no second addresses. You get one opportunity for three minutes.
Doing, I'm Jason Labonte with Home Innovations. So, I just got read tonight that you guys are thinking about doing some sort of moratorium. Unfortunately, I don't have the details to this, so it's kind of hard for me to fully comment on exactly what you guys are thinking, because it doesn't, it sounds to me like this is fairly new, and there's not really a plan kind of put in place yet. So, it'd definitely be a lot easier, I think, if the community had what you guys are kind of thinking. Is this for just multifamily units? Is this a single family? Is this specifically for, you know, one zone, or is this for the whole entire city? So, I guess with that being said, you know, it's kind of confusing on exactly, you know, what everybody's going to want to kind of comment on. You know, we're just trying to stop growth 100%? Not sure if that's really a good idea, I don't think everybody in this room is really thinking, you know, what that's going to really impact. You know, as far as, you know, you stop saying, "Hey, no houses to be built at all for next year." Well, that might sound good to some people, it benefits them personally, but I think as a community, I mean, your children's not going to be able to buy a house in the city, and if it is, you think the cost of housing is high now. Just imagine if there's only three houses available to buy. As of right now, there's only two new construction homes for sale in the city, both of mine. And, you know, so it's, as of right now, I have no competition, you know? I could basically charge what I want. I mean, I can, you know, because I got to compete with the older houses and stuff like that, but the point I'm trying to make is that the less houses are on the market, the higher the price is going to be, okay? So, you got to kind of take that in for account, you know, and it will affect the tradespeople. And it's easy for somebody to say, "Oh, who cares about them for a year?" Well, I'd like to see everybody in this room just sit there and say, "Okay, we're not going to work for a year." Easy to sit there and say it's, the problem's somebody else's problem, but ultimately, as a community, we're all supposed to be working together, okay? So, not against anything you guys are trying to do, I'd like to just see some sort of a plan and try to work it out, more than happy to work with the towns, and, you know, with our opinions and everybody else's opinions, because really, it's everybody's opinion gathered together is what really works best for everyone, so. All right? Have a good night.
Thank you. Any further comments for the city council?
Chuck Massey, 264 Lincoln Street, Saco. I think moratorium, it's too bad that we need it, but I think we could certainly use it. Everything is traffic, 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 there's too much now, it's so tough getting across Route 1, getting across Main Street, and it's building everywhere and everywhere. It'd be nice to slow down at least, if it's not six months, four months, whatever, but just take a break and take a step back and figure out traffic and health issues, whatever. Thanks.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak before the city council, please come forward and be heard. Moving on from public comment. That brings us to item seven, approval of the minutes, the meeting minutes for September 12, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Councilor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McPhail. Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call, vote on the minutes. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the minutes. Brings us to item eight, consent agenda. Item A is confirm mayor's reappointment to Coastal Waters Commission of Thomas Casamassa. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Councilor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor McPhail, any discussion? Roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item nine, action items. On page three in your packet, item A is one reading, adoption of the York County's FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan, which you all received a copy of, and I'm sure it was enjoyable reading through the large document. The chief is here, but he has informed me that there's no additional information for him to add into it, however, he is here to answer any questions from the council. So, with that, that is assigned to Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. In 2004... Let's try this again. In 2004, the York County Emergency Management Agency, YCEMA, prepared a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan in accordance with the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. This plan was updated in 2010, 2015, and again in 2022. The 2022 update to the 2015 plan fulfills the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA's requirement that local hazard mitigation plans be updated every five years. In accordance with the state home rule laws, each of the 29 municipalities in the county has jurisdiction over all land use and planning regulations. county has jurisdiction over all land use and planning regulations. Therefore, the 2022 plan update was written with local interest in mind and with participation and input from the local emergency directors and other officials. Is being presented to the legislative bodies of all 29 cities and towns for adoption. Staff recommends approval. Whereas natural and man-made disasters may occur at any time, we recognize that to lessen the impacts of these disasters, we will save resources, property, and lives in York County. And whereas the creation of a hazard mitigation plan is necessary for the development of a risk assessment and effective mitigation strategy. And whereas the 26 towns and three cities of York County are committed to mitigation goals and measures as presented in this plan, I move to adopt the York County Hazard Mitigation Plan. City of Saco hereby...
Motion's been made by Councilor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McPhail to adopt the hazard mitigation plan for York County's FEMA. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to item B on page four in your packet, a public hearing renewal application for a special entertainment permit, Bedford Saco Elks Lodge, number 1597, assigned to Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bedford Saco Elks Lodge, number 1597, has applied for renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment Subsection 93.2. Staff recommends approval. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call to open the public hearing, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to open the public hearing at 7:17 PM. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, the renewal application for special entertainment permit for the Bedford Saco Elks Lodge, number 1597, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody seeking recognition, Councilor Gunn.
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by Bedford Saco Elks Lodge, number 1597, for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with establishment's current liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Any discussion on closing the public hearing and approving the renewal permit? Seeing no recognition being sought, roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at 7:18. That brings us to item C on page six in your packet. It's a public hearing petition for zoning map amendment to rezone a portion of 32 Lincoln Road from Rural Conservation RC to medium-density residential zone, or MDR zone. That is assigned to Councilor Purdy.
Thank you. By petition, property owner Linda Pollan requests the city council to amend the zoning map to rezone a portion of 32 Lincoln Road, map 101, Lot 24, from the rural conservation zone to the medium-density residential zone. The subject property abuts an MDR district. The planning board voted 5-0 to forward a positive recommendation to the city council during their July 19 meeting. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councilor Purdy to open a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote to open the public hearing, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to open the public hearing at 7:19 PM. Those wishing to speak on this item, the petition for zoning map amendment, rezone a portion of 32 Lincoln Road from rural conservation to medium-density residential zone, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Councilor Purdy.
I move to close the public hearing and set the final reading for October 3, 2022.
Motion's been made by Councilor Purdy to close the public hearing and set final reading for October... Third, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, is there a second? Sorry.
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to close the public hearing and set final reading for the third. Brings us to item D in the packet on page seven. It's a public hearing amendment to section 7.1 of the Saco zoning ordinance for small-scale renewable energy facilities. Councilor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saco zoning ordinance and other land use regulations do not contain provisions for regulating or permitting small-scale renewable energy facilities, such as solar arrays, on private properties despite their potential to negatively impact nearby areas. Staff propose amendments to Saco zoning ordinance, which would minimize potential impacts from these facilities by establishing minimum setbacks, height limits, screening requirements, and permitting procedures. After holding a public hearing during July 19 and August 2 meetings, Saco's planning board voted 5-0 to forward a positive recommendation to city council to adopt the attached amendments. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councilor Berman to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilor Johnston to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call vote to open the public hearing, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. The public hearing is now open at 7:22 PM on amendment to section 7.1 of Saco zoning ordinance for small-scale renewable energy facilities. If you'd like to speak on this item, please come forward and be heard. With nobody coming forward, Councilor Berman?
I move to close the public hearing and to schedule a final reading for October 3, 2022.
Motion's been made by Councilor Berman to close the public hearing and set final reading for October 3. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item E, page 11, one reading, authorization to send letter of intent for dredge project, and that is Councilor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. Local communities share the burden of beach erosion and the continuous need for dredging. Some of these communities wish to form a quasi municipal dredging authority to address these issues. The attached letter of intent will be sent to multiple municipalities who wish to combat these issues together. Be it ordered that the city council authorize signing a letter of intent regarding the dredge
Motion's been made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd really like to recognize and appreciate the efforts of SOS Saco Bay to bring us to this point. Forming a quasi municipal dredging authority that would manage, schedule, and operate a regional dredge purchased by York County with ARPA funds would be a historic step in combating coastal erosion and protecting our shores, ensuring the health of our beachfront communities. And it's, it's an incredible achievement that we've come to this point. So I'd just like to commend everybody for getting involved and really encourage my fellow counselors to authorize this letter.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to authorize to send a letter of intent for the dredge project. That brings us to item 10, new business. Before we do that, there has been an ask for a recess, so grant a five-minute recess. Let's try to be back here by 7:30. With that, we will start the new business portion. And up first is on page 14 in your packet is item A, a petition for city acceptance of new public streets, Sancho Drive and Jenny's Way, Precious Hidden Estates subdivision. We will hear from, a presentation from city planner Jason Garnum. Greetings and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Good evening, councilors. Brian, developer Jason Labonte requests city acceptance of two new public city streets, Sancho Drive and Jenny's Way. These streets were approved as part of the Precious Hidden Estates subdivision back in 2017. That project was for 48 new residential lots, and those streets are accessed from New County Road. Deeds in your packet were provided by Tim Murphy, after review by the city engineer and the developer. And we have an updated from last week punch list from the city engineer showing the progress that the, the project has seen recently. And furthermore, I, I had a phone conversation with the developer earlier today indicating that several of those items have been completed, and the others should be finished within the next week or so. So as evidenced in the, in your packet and in the memo, staff, including myself, the city attorney, and the city engineer, all recommend acceptance of those streets as public streets. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council that wasn't answered in the packet regarding accepting these two streets? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is less, more for the mayor is there's a couple outstanding items. I've been trying to hold developers accountable, so if those two items are knocked out before we vote, you've got my approval. So let's try to get that done before this gets to the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Councilor Hatch?
Could you tell us what items are not yet completed?
Let me grab the, the list.
I would, I would agree with Councilor Archer.
I would note the developer is present and has volunteered to speak. I will pull up the city engineer's punch list. Punch list says, item one, complete repaving of the driveway apron to Lot 1. That, I understand, has been completed. Install pavement markings in accordance with approved plan and city standards. I believe that's in progress, as is number three. Number six, I recall, being completed. Sorry, I didn't, I don't have my, my notes from our conversation with me. Number three is, is pending materials. This is install tactile warning surfaces at the sidewalk ramps. Mr. Labonte explained to me that those tactile, they're the, they're basically rubber mats that get screwed to the pavement. they're the they're basically rubber mats that get screwed to the pavement. Those are not currently available. And then the force main condition seems to be that's something that can sort of happen anytime is what I gathered. It's infrastructure that's already been built. It's just a check to make sure everything's working as it's supposed to. So we basically have half finished. The other half scheduled to be completed in the next week or two, according to the developer. Is that helpful?
Any further questions? Counselor McPhail?
So if it's to be completed in the next week or two, and the tactile surfaces are not available, are they coming in to be completed? Or what is the estimated timeframe on those?
I don't know.
Mr. Garnum, if you can't answer, maybe Mr. Labonte can answer those.
Good evening, Jason Labonte, the Home Innovations developer. We are actually able sorry, Jason, I just had conversations with him this morning, followed up later this afternoon, and I haven't updated him. So the I did talk to the excavators today. We were able to purchase some from Public Works. So the ADA tactiles are installed as of today. The Lomond seat is almost 100% complete. We're 90% 90% done. We'll have the rest of it done by noon time tomorrow. So the only outstanding items we're going to have is the striping for the crosswalks. So those two crosswalks just need to be striped. Got them on schedule. Can't get them out there until next week. We just did the finished paving last week. So other than that, and we just have to inspect the manhole for the pump station, which that was actually taken over by the town two years ago, and it's been running flawlessly for the last two years. So they just put on a list that they want to do an inspection for the sewer on the east side of the highway, which I don't see that being an issue because it's been running for two years with no issues at all. So afternoon time tomorrow, the only thing we'll have is the striping for the crosswalks and inspection of a manhole, and that's it.
And you anticipate those being done by next week or the week after, excuse me, October 3 or October 17?
Yes.
When council might consider this?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Is there a council that wants to be the liaison on this?
I believe you have me listed. I'll take it.
Any objection to this coming before the council as a as an item? Okay. Moving on to new business, item B, temporary residential development moratorium on page 30 in your packet. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I have spent a great deal of time over the last several months crafting the information provided tonight for council consideration as a new business item B, a temporary residential development. To avoid an ad nauseam effect, I will simply assume that all of my fellow city councilors have read the three pages of comment and the four pages of proposed draft moratorium language, which are already part of the public record. Both documents are designed to start the conversation, not end it. If there is a council consensus to move forward with this initiative, the standard three meeting process to a final vote should provide ample time for council staff and the public to to weigh in. I would like to highlight a couple of the items that are in the packet. I will not read the whole thing verbatim. But I do want to point out that this body in February 2022 set a prioritized focus of areas and goals. And schools and infrastructure achieve the number two ranking after financial stability. And we define the stated goal for schools and infrastructure as invest in our schools and infrastructure in ways that are fiscally responsible, environmentally resilient, and support the growth of our community that our community wants. So the focus here is large scale, high density residential development. It's not the small developers. And it's not a question of if this development is coming, it's a question of when. The challenges of facing large scale, high density residential development within the city, I've come to realize, are multifaceted and somewhat complex. Adequate time is needed to develop smart growth strategies to address this growth. And if we provide sufficient time to develop a series of action plans to achieve a fair balance between the clear need for more residential housing stock and minimizing costly impacts on city infrastructure, that is the desired goal of this temporary moratorium. We can look around us and see that large scale, high density residential growth is a challenge being faced by several of our neighboring communities. All of them are looking for ways to slow the growth while simultaneously preparing for it. Brief summary of the observations I've made over the last few months. I've been to many, many planning board meetings. The current zoning ordinance, I think, was was fractured when we approved it in January of 2021. That's been made evident in observations. I don't think it's fair to expect that a planning department staff and a planning board who are doing the best they can to effectively administer zoning ordinance with such content shortcomings. This needs to be remedied completely. We have comp plan that we just approved. We have yet to compare the old zoning ordinance with the new comp plan, and the state does mandate that both documents are in harmony with each other. We need to take a minute and take a look at that as well. Affordable housing, you know, everybody realizes that those concerns continue to plague our community. And I think it's time we we try to come up with plans and maybe embed in our ordinance density bonuses for affordable housing that don't currently exist. School capacity is an issue. And so we know that there are plans in place. We're a ways off from that. But the ability of our existing buildings to absorb large student population population growth is going to be a challenge. I'm personally really concerned about public safety and our challenges that we currently have in trying to staff our police department to the level that is is reasonable, if you will, for our current population. And we know that attracting individuals to law enforcement careers is a is a challenge. It's actually a national crisis. And then from a fire safety standpoint, response times tends to be a point of discussion. And we know that that current standards of response time can't be met in several areas of Saco, including projected residential and commercial growth areas. And traffic safety is on everybody's everybody's radar screen, if you will. So for these reasons, and I'm sure many others, if we get a chance to actually sit down and collaborate, talk honestly with each other, we can probably come up with a few more issues. And that's precisely why we need this timeout, simply a timeout to discuss and plan. I'm going to repeat something that's in my packet because it's important. I want to be clear on this next point. The many citizens I have spoken with during this fact finding effort are not the NIMBYs described by some. They are simply respectable, concerned citizens who want their municipal land use policies to preserve some fabric of the community they have helped build over the years. They're fully aware that residential growth is going to occur within the city. They are also smart enough to know that the zoning ordinances are not meant to stop real estate development if that type of development is allowed under the zoning ordinance. Of course, that logic assumes that the zoning ordinance is not fractured, is in harmony with a comprehensive plan, and provides adequate municipal infrastructure impact remediation measures, and is steadfastly administered by the planning department and the planning board. So let me just conclude with this. The moratorium timeframes illustrated in the draft document, by the time the three-step council approval process moves through as expeditiously as it can, that six-month window will likely only have four months remaining. The city of Saco was incorporated in 1867. If we can't stop for four months, just think about where we want the future of our city to go. Something's wrong. The short-term timeout will give the planning department, the planning board, the opportunity to review the ordinances, recommend any modifications, fix any flaws, and seek harmony with the comp plan. It'll give our staff time, our professional staff, an opportunity to to let us know as a council what their more detailed infrastructure concerns are and some some action plans that we can consider. And we need to embed a heavy discussion on affordable housing in that moratorium period. Just to remind some folks who are concerned, we were proposing the shutdown development completely. That is not the case. The moratorium language relates only to residential development and not commercial. The moratorium exempts residential projects of eight units or less. And that should allow smaller developments and all commercial development to proceed without delay. This was mentioned in the public hearing by one of our speakers, and I'm going to reaffirm this. The moratorium presents presents a meaningful opportunity for honest collaboration amongst elected officials and city staff with a goal of setting smart growth initiatives. I would go on record as supporting the moving of this agenda item from new business to an action item first reading on the October 3 council meeting agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor McPhail. Deputy Mayor McPhail. Jody, can you come up to the board?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor McPhail, members of the city council. Please, just wanted to go on record officially and say I am very much against this moratorium. If you listen to a lot of the speakers, a lot of speakers will use hyperbole and different reasons as to why. But let's take into facts, because facts still matter. Fact, the zoning ordinance revision commission that was appointed by the previous city council and previous mayor did their job for over two years, two years coming up with a new zoning ordinance. And yes, the council passed that said ordinance. If you're trying to take a timeout to come up with the perfect ordinance that's going to solve every problem in the community, you're going to continue working on that forever. These are living, breathing documents, just like contracts. They 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 get redefined. That's why there's an amendment process. If you want to make changes to the zoning ordinance revision, just like we did with these solar panels, present an amendment and make the amendment. We don't need to take a timeout because, well, some will say it's a it's a timeout to reevaluate and to reengage folks in a collaborative discussion. For two and a half years, members of the community, 21 public hearings, go back and count them. I did. 21 public hearings to come up with a zoning ordinance. And I believe there were 16, and I may be off on the number, please. There was 15 or 16 members of the zoning ordinance revision committee appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council to do that work. Moreover, the comp plan update of 2018 and the comp plan redo of last year or this year it was adopted, they're pretty much, if you look at them, they're pretty similar. Because members of this community came together and again reaffirmed in 2018 and 2022 or 2021, when the public hearings happened, what they wanted. That's the process. So to sit here and do a moratorium on units of eight parts, eight units or less, doesn't guarantee any outcome. Because during the time from now to whenever the moratorium ends, you could have 28 unit developments come up. And then does planning board and planning staff have time to go through and do this collaborative process, which is basically a rewrite of the zoning ordinance, if you look at it? And that's what the moratorium is really designed to is to redo areas of the zoning ordinance that some people didn't like when the council passed it. But again, let's talk about facts. The facts is Oak Point, you don't have to take it from me. Go to the last school board meeting. Oak Point has said the school population for children is in decline. We have declining enrollment. We've had declining enrollment for the past 10 years. And you don't, again, you don't have to take my word for it. Counselor Johnston and I went to Thornton Academy when the classes and Counselor Archer and Counselor Gunn, we went to Thornton Academy when there were 1,200 students in the school, maybe even 1,300. Today, there's 863. Our enrollment for pre-K through eight is declining. And it's a direct result of the ability or the inability for young families to afford houses in Saco. That's just the long and short of it. You put a house on the market here in Saco, and it's gone very quickly. And that it's not gone at a cheap price. So when you look at that, all, as one of the speakers said earlier, and forgive me, I'm drawing a blank on who it was, because there were many speakers, and I want to thank everybody for for coming up and presenting their ideas. But one of the speakers said that if you limit the amount of housing, then the prices of that housing is going to go up inherently because there's a limited number, right? Supply and demand economics. You don't have to be a rocket scientist. They figured this out years ago. If there's a large supply, the amount's down. If there's a short supply, the amount's up. That's that's what it is. So again, when we talk about these things, let's deal in facts, right? We don't have to revisit this. Again, if there's there are challenges with a document, happens all the time. Let's make amendments, amendments to fix that. And, you know, if you look at the language in the document that was presented by Counselor Hatch, it talks about ordering the planning board to meet with us. These are volunteers, folks. These are volunteers that get ridiculed every time they look at a decision, every time, you know, something's before them. And they do get some praise, too, but the ridicule far outweighs the praise. But these are volunteers trying hard to do stuff in their community. And again, we've already been through the revision process. And some will say there's no experience on the planning board. There's three planning board members, including the chair, with over five years' experience dealing with these issues affecting our community. So again, when we look at a moratorium, a moratorium will do nothing to solve the problem. There's no guarantee at the outcome of the six months or four months or however long it is, there's no guarantee that the resolution will be what the goal of it is. Because the simple fact is staff, planning board members, city council may get tied up in other things. And, you know, the planning board was designed to be apolitical, designed so that they're not elected, so that you there shouldn't be political influence. Now, is there, you know, I don't ask the planning board members that I appoint, hey, are you for this or are you against this? I don't have a prerequisite. I do ask if they're if they would like to see some growth in the community, which, again, go back to Bridge which, again, go back to Bridge 2025, go back to the comp plan update of 2018, and then further with the comp plan update that we just passed in 2022. All of them say, we want more dining. We want more business establishments for entertainment. Business owners are not going to build or open businesses if you don't have a support base to go to those businesses, right? I mean, if you look at Rock Row, Rock Row is building, putting in a lot more new businesses. Why? Because they're putting in housing. Housing for people to get into and then go to these establishments. So by a moratorium on housing, however long it is, you are affecting business development. You're affecting commercial development. And let's be clear, we need to have residential development because that's how the city brings in revenues. And revenues pays for the infrastructure costs, the infrastructure costs that we all want so badly. You know, so again, please consider this moratorium. And if you are going to consider this moratorium to move it forward, please amend the date to be prospective instead of retroactive. So that that way there, anything that's currently in the pipeline doesn't bring forth a lawsuit, whether the lawsuit would be, would win or not, regardless of the outcome, please make sure that it's a forward, prospecting moratorium, if that's the way that the council would like to go. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Any council party?
Thank you. I've got a page full of notes here, and I'm going to try to make sense of them. I'm going to start out with a couple of questions that may be more suited to the city solicitor. First of all, can a moratorium be more than 60 days? I seem to remember the two moratoriums that we have passed in recent history seem to remember that they cannot extend past 60 days. The other question would be, is a three-meeting process needed? I don't seem to remember that we went through a three-meeting process with any of the previous two moratoriums that were passed. Two or three moratoriums, can't remember. At any rate, I'm not sure that that three-meeting process is actually needed. So that brings up a concern as to bringing it to an action item as early as next week. I myself have not had the several months to delve into this that Councilor Hatch has. So going on, going beyond that, I'm curious as to what the perceived discrepancies between the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan are. The comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance was passed before the comprehensive plan, and I think there were great pains taken to make sure that the comprehensive plan that was presented to us was in harmony with the current zoning ordinance. So at any rate, that's my question. What would be, what are these discrepancies that are perceived? And a comment on that, isn't the harmony between the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, doesn't that fall under the purview of the Long Range Planning Committee? From what I could see on the city website, the Long Range Planning Committee hasn't met since November 17th of last year. So almost a year since the last meeting of the Long Range Planning Committee. It seems we have a committee that is geared towards this type of thinking, and why hasn't that committee met and worked on these things? So we just passed the zoning ordinance less than two years ago and just recently passed the comprehensive plan and still waiting for the state's input on that. So I'm concerned with going back and essentially rewriting these documents that how many hundreds of thousands of dollars and how much time was spent on it? Are we going to, are we just going to completely redo the process? Now, I don't mean to, I don't want to discount the concerns that have been brought up, all legitimate concerns. And this is a conversation that's deserving of, deserving of everybody's attention. You know, traffic's an issue. My wife, daughter, and grandchildren were hit on Tasker Street and 112 just a week ago. So yeah, it's a concern. But overall, I think, all that being said, I have some concerns as to the, as to the effects that such a moratorium could have on the real estate market, the jobs and economy, and even taxes in the city. Not just six months down the road, but how is a six-month moratorium going to affect things a year or two or three? You know, where we have a gap in anything being approved and so therefore a six-month gap in the start of any new projects that may or not be considered affordable housing. That's a pretty subjective term, actually. So anyway, these are just some of my concerns. I'm not in favor of bringing this up as an action item next week, simply because, as I stated before, I haven't had months to delve into this. Certainly a conversation worth having, but I don't want to, I don't want to rush because there could be some pretty consequent, could be some not-so-good unintended consequences. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, your first two questions on the moratorium specifically, this differs a little bit from the two most recent ones we've done, which were for marijuana and also the solar facilities. Those were both emergency moratoriums, which were a one-meeting process for 61 days that's renewable. So that's where the one-meeting process was from, for emergency-only moratorium.
Thank you, Councilor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have great respect and admiration for Councilor Hatch. I've read his motion and rationale carefully and repeatedly. I've read many emails written to us, including a particularly lengthy one by my Rotary colleague and winter neighbor, Bill Keaney. Thank you, Bill. It's an hour of my life. I understand their arguments, understand the issues they raise. I believe everyone is acting in good faith regarding what they see as urgent city needs. Unfortunately, I simply disagree with this moratorium. When I hear from constituents and when I talk to my neighbors, the largest crisis that we're facing is the price of housing in Saco. It's the lack of available homes and apartments really at any price. People simply can't move here. I have neighbors whose children just can't buy a place in Saco. They're forced to move despite wanting to live here. I hear about senior citizens who are simply priced out of our town. To me, it's that lack of housing to meet that out-of-control demand that's creating unsustainable market conditions that need to be remedied. That's an urgent need that needs to happen now. In addition, I can't help but worry that some of the fears are misguided. If we want to bring in more housing, but we want to control taxes and control pressure on school, it's exactly high-density housing in downtown regions that we need. These types of projects indicate are to younger, childless professionals or retirees. While some children may live there, it's a much smaller proportion than you'd get with single-family housing. If we fear traffic and overburdened utilities, then again, we should be favoring higher-density development on arterial large roads. Putting single-family housing in outlying areas adds additional traffic for commutes, for shopping, for assessing community services. It's the high-density housing that attracts services within walking distance that allows people to park their cars and engage as pedestrians and bicyclists in our city. Thus, I believe the proposed solution is the exact opposite of what is needed to address the problems identified. I'm also having a little bit of trouble, despite the assurances, separating this request from some current projects that have been proposed at the Lincoln Street or Kimball properties. There have been other large projects that have been approved recently that didn't garner this much concern. The retroactive nature of this proposal further highlights the idea that there may be certain projects that are being targeted. By the time a three-meeting process goes through, the moratorium will be retroactive for maybe six or weeks or eight weeks. To me, that's unconscionable. The Kimball-Lincoln Street property will be developed. It will. There must be some kind of development that we won't object to, right? Indeed, high-density housing, close to downtown, where city services exist, is exactly the kind of development we need. Now, there are real issues that need solutions. I absolutely agree with the premise. The Long Range Planning Committee can do that work. We recently passed the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. We can always go back and revisit those. The amendment process exists. But I believe that Saco needs housing. It needs it now. A moratorium will exacerbate these existing issues in our housing stock. It will not fix them. I can't support the moratorium. I encourage my fellow counselors to not support the moratorium. We need to move Saco forward. We cannot freeze it in place. The problems identified can be solved in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd say I think that everybody had really good points tonight. And, you know, at times here, I find myself conflicted with all these issues over the last nine years on city council. I agree with Councilor Berman's assessment that we need more housing. But I also don't believe that housing for the sake of housing, without a plan as to where it's going to go, makes much sense. We've seen those impacts over the last 20, 30 years here in this community. So while I'm conflicted and I certainly hear how it will impact, you know, people in the real estate industry, people trying to sell homes or build homes, I think that, you know, doing nothing actually would be more harmful. So I think there's merit to this. Four years ago, five years ago, after almost weekly going into then our former administrator's office pointing out conflicts I saw with the previous zoning ordinance, I had a similar approach as Councilor Hatch. At that time, the outcome of it was this zoning ordinance revision process that I sat through two years or whatever it was. But even towards the end of that, I recognized that we had many issues we hadn't addressed. And you can say we can do amendments, but I have now waited two-plus years to do many of those amendments that we decided to put on the burner, so to speak, or on the shelf. And we sit here and day after day, those issues crop up. So I view this as an opportunity, really, to fix these issues. It's not an emotional thing, as I'm sure it is for others here. It seems to be going that way, anyway. But I remember a former counselor used to state all the time that prior administrations would kick the can down the road. Well, we've been kicking the can down the road for my nine years here, and I think this is the opportunity. We know what these are. We're not rewriting a zoning ordinance, as that has been alluded to. I mean, at least, that's not my intent here. I have very measured results that I already have. I mean, you, as counselors, have sat up here and listened to me time after time, say, oh, I introduced this, I introduced that. It didn't go anywhere for whatever reason. You know, I'm not pointing fingers. It's, we didn't have time, we didn't have staff to perform it. I mean, I can tell you right now, I was walking down the street this afternoon thinking, you know, I probably could keep the code enforcement office busy myself just with code issues or conflicts in code along with the zoning ordinance. That's certainly not my intent, but there seems to be a lot of loopholes. There seems to be fragmentation throughout the ordinance. And in order to create that housing, I mean, Mr. Pylon earlier tonight addressed, you know, how I had said in the past or continue to about affordable housing for young families. Well, if we don't do something here, we're never going to get to that point because we can't have, you know, our cake and eat it too. For the longest time, we talked about keeping seniors in our homes. And I'm agreeable to that. But those senior homes used to be those starter homes. And now keeping people in their homes well into their 90s, as my grandmother just recently did, you know, that's not creating affordable homes or starter homes, as we used to call them, for young families. But without having a means in our policies to actually incentivize starter homes, we're not going to have starter homes. So again, I, you know, whether it's unpopular or not, I couldn't care less. I think that, you know, this is the direction we need to take, whether it's four months, six months. I'm certainly not proposing three years or whatever it may be. And again, if you're a Realtor, you want to sell a house. I get that. But it's not to the detriment of our community. I know the number-one thing I have heard time and time again, nine years now, 95% of everything that is stated to me is developmental concerns directly. That's where they're coming from. Whether it's traffic, I don't have an answer. I mean, Phil Hatch, you know, Councilor Hatch, you sit on traffic safety with me time and time again. It's a lot of the same things over and over. And what do we hear from staff? We don't have enough staff. Well, until we address what is adequate staff, how do we actually address the issues that people complain about? Same with the fire department, same with code enforcement. Last I knew, we were down a code enforcement officer. So we're not even at a standard or adequate staffing to address an ordinance that we passed, oh, I don't know, seven years ago with the multifamily inspections. So we have an ordinance on the books presently that we can't actually enforce or implement because we don't have adequate staff. Yet we continue to forge ahead and add to the housing stock. So I get what you're saying, Councilor Berman, but I think this needs to be a collaborative effort. The emotions need to go by the wayside, and we need to address these things in a collaborative nature. I do not believe anybody up here is against creating more housing or what have you. I think that there's frustrations that exist among our citizens and amongst counselors and, to be quite honest, amongst staff members that need to be addressed. And, you know, it's like watching, this is my perspective. It's like watching a chicken run around with its head cut off. We're going in all sorts of different directions without addressing the actual issues. And so we can say that was the point of the zoning ordinance. Yep, you're right. You know what? That got fast-tracked, and I sat on it. And honestly, it would have been done in a year if I hadn't put my foot down and raised the issues about clear catastrophic issues that would have been detrimental to the city. But I still flip through that ordinance. I don't expect all of you to understand it the way I do, but I still flip through that ordinance and go, oh, crap. You missed that. You missed that. Oh, did you know this? And I think that if I actually sat down with many of you that live in separate wards and explained to you the potential of it, you probably might have different opinions when you sit up here or stand up here and talk about the need for more housing. I mean, you know, I could go on forever on this issue specifically because, you know, we talk about housing, and one of the things, you know, that I had issue with during that entire rezoning process is, you know, we want to dump everything into the downtown, which I'm not supportive of. But we talk about where housing belongs and where it doesn't belong. Well, there's adequate infrastructure all down your ward, Councilor Berman. And I'm not saying you're not, or you're opposed to this, but at one point, I had actually recommended that we allowed up to four units in those areas because the infrastructure is there. It wasn't received positively. But I think it's still a conversation that should be had because what we're seeing is sprawl. And so, single-family homes... And so, single-family homes continue to pop up on the other side of the turnpike, and it's not going to get better. And what we need to be doing is actually addressing these issues and not just moving forward. And I think we can do that in six months. And so that's why I'm supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those folks in the audience who, hang on, let me just bring it back up here. If you have Counselor Hatch's proposed moratorium and his rationale behind it in front of you, great. And if not, I'll get to the pertinent point is, it's on page 35 of the packet, and it's the part under what he proposes that would happen in a situation of a moratorium for planned, planning board workshops about specific topics. And again, if you get away from the whole blanket sort of, whether it's Broheim's about smart growth and, you know, development and all that sort of thing, or even sort of the, you know, the one-size, well, I wouldn't say one-size-fits-all, but sort of like what the, what would, it would mean to Saco if we put a moratorium down. That would be the story in the paper, and that would be the, they wouldn't care about the details, they wouldn't care about the rationale, they'd just say, oh, look, just like Cape Elizabeth, Saco has just put their foot down and said, whether it's, they're not going to look at the particulars, whether it's eight or less, they're going to say they're anti-growth, or they're Saco go again, saying that everybody in Saco, they got theirs, and they don't want anyone else coming in the community spoiling what they got. Now, I'm saying that's just the perspective. But perspective is a reality when it comes to a developer, when it comes to people who want to invest, and it comes to when people want, where they want to live. Now, the reason I say that as a beginning of what I'm saying is, I'm looking at the list for planning board workshops that Counselor Hatch is recommending. And just the ones that jump out at me, master plan, gee, master plan development in the Portland Road District up where I am, contract zones including contact, contract enforcement procedures, and obviously, infrastructure impact fees, if there is anything related to the environment. Just to use those three as a starting point, there is consensus, I think informally, commonsensely among this council, that, yeah, those are things that we need to talk about. And to Counselor Johnson's point, yeah, amendments that could fix these, such as the, such as the planning board did with the planning board process, the way it's supposed to do with the solar panels, which we are one meeting away from having an actual solar panel ordinance for standing solar panels. It went exactly the way it was supposed to and went from having nothing on the books and perhaps chaos, and perhaps people really angry that they're going to put giant solar panels up, to actually a well-rationed, rationed thought-out procedure that's going to fix a situation where it allows people to do what they want on their property without interfering with their people's property rights. And I commend the planning board for coming up with something, I honestly, considering how people's attitudes are in this city, I was afraid that the planning board was going to come back with something kind of draconian, though, and actually, they came with something very reasonable that respects people's property rights. And I commend the planning board for that, though. So for the folks that, you know, say the planning board may not be up to snuff or something, though, planning board's doing a heck of a job, though, because they did something pretty fair that's going to encourage people in Saco to sort of divest from the grid and actually, you know, start creating their own power, maybe save on their utilities, which I think is something that is about as pertinent as it gets these days. Now, going to what I was talking about, you know, master plan development, something I'm majorly in favor of because I, I mean, as much as every business that comes into the city specifically in my ward, you know, Portland, the Portland Road District, though, they add to the property taxes, they add to all this money where everyone wants, everyone wants everything from more police to more fire to more sewer to more everything, that we only have so much money and so much money coming in. You've got to get it from development somehow. Having a master plan actually gives people a place to live. And having that on the books as something done, that is something that the council can talk about, that's something the council can actually sort of empower the planning board to say, look, we know we got a law on your plate, though, but let's make this a priority. I mean, I know as a councilor, when I agreed to put it on the back burner, I didn't expect to be on the back burner for a year and a half, though. I just assumed it was something we were going to get to. And I just, as a, so there, again, therein lies something we agree on, something that we agree that master plan needs to be fixed. Contract zone, including contract enforcement procedures. Well, how many times have we had someone who has a contract zone, and they haven't done what they were supposed to do? And we've pretty much been caught with our pants down. We don't have the ability to, you know, to hold their feet to the fire. That's something we all agree on. My point is, I don't think we need to stop growth, whether it's perceived or not, with a moratorium, perceived as a blanket, whether it is or not. I think since we have the focus, since we have the ideas, and we have already an informal consensus just by talking, I think, amongst ourselves, we can direct city staff through new business items to tackle these things one at a time. And it would actually start solving the actual practical problems that, that I think that the proposed moratorium takes a more blanket approach because we've had moratoriums before, six months pass, four months pass, and, you know, history doesn't really change that much. We're all back to square one. And like to the mayor's point, though, we all get back into these, we all get back to the corner, like with the next COVID or the next crisis or, you know. It's just something that I don't think serves the general purpose. And the general purpose at the end of the day is to have managed, smart growth for the city, which we need. And I will make a simple editorial point that I don't think Saco, when it comes to affordable housing, be it affordable housing, actual units themselves, or workforce housing, whatever terminology you want to use, or creating homes that allow people to have a starter home and move up to former Mayor Pylon's point, doesn't really solve the housing issue that every municipality in this state, for their size and their ability to contribute, has been lacking in. We've seen the statistics. We know how many housing units are needed per year on a, on a general rate of growth for the next generation to give people in the city, in the state of Maine, an actual place to live. Anything that impedes the ability of anybody to have a place to live, by its six months, whether it's a month, whether it's a week, I got to tell you, I, call me a bleeding heart, though, but I, it pains me when a city takes full advantage of their home rules and say, you know, hey, Saco's got ours right now, though, we got too many things, and because it's too much and we can't handle it, we're not going to even go down that route. And I look at our friends over in Scarborough. Scarborough, they're having a big debate right now about the Scarborough Downs development. And I was just reading last night, though, in the, in the forecaster, though, they decided to go with more units than was previously planned for that, with a contentious council debate on it. And I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, but if it goes anything like the way Cape Elizabeth goes, though, it just may end up with a lot of hurt feelings, a lot of calls of foul play, whether they're, you know, fair or not, and maybe lead to another moratorium, which is the last thing we need because we have a growing community on our northern border, though, that actually is willing to do their part, a lot more than Saco's been able to do in the last generation in terms of giving people a place to live, which is a moral issue, and it should be one that people actually care about. But they're about to maybe sabotage themselves because of the process. They couldn't get around their own heads. Now, if that means down back into city of Saco, we should have a growth ordinance, something actually on the books, so we don't have to keep playing this game of, you know, we have a development that everybody hates, so therefore, that's going to motivate people to stop development. Not going to stop that development, to Counselor Berman's point, but it might stop something else, which might be equally bad. Well, I mean, if you go, if you go ping-ponging between the two, you're never going to get the type of development that you need for your workforce housing, for your, and which is going to trickle up for the people that are either going to retire here, that they want to move here with their families. So, as I said, we agree on some of the particulars here. I don't think we should wrap it up in a moratorium when I think we have the drive and the ability as a council, starting soon as we possibly can, to sort of like start tackling these as new business items, one at a time, and I think the city's going to be better off for it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Planner Garnum, could you come down to the podium, please?
Thank you, and sorry to put you on the spot, but a lot of discussion is going on about master plan development. And master plan development was supposed to be something that the planning board was going to take up at some point here, late last year or late, early this year. Can you tell us the status of master plan development, where it is, what's next?
Sure thing, Mayor Doyle. So master plan development is among quite a number of items on our list in the planning department to work with the planning board on. We admittedly have not prioritized it, in part because I've perceived that, based on actual permit volume and economic activity in the community, that we really should, up to this point, have been focusing on other things, including public notice procedures, which we're actively working on, preliminary revisions to industrial zoning in the Portland Road District in response to really a very high volume of quasi-industrial uses being proposed within that zoning district, among other things. So the solar zoning amendment among them. We've also gotten a lot of requests about marijuana zoning. As you know, we did some, we had some conversations about that and have done a little bit of work on it. But again, I heard from you and the planning board that that was maybe not as important as some of those other things. So I am hearing you. That is something that we can elevate, but I might, I might argue, given actual permit data and the folks coming in our door, that it may not be quite as urgent as a lot of other things. Now, I recognize that I only dictate my workload to a certain extent. I do work for you all, so certainly that, where we have that in our order of priority can be changed, but that's why we haven't worked on it yet.
Thank you. After Counselor Archer. Counselor Archer. Counselor Archer's deferring to you. Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counselor. So Planner Garnum, I just have a more of a rhetorical question, though, again, this isn't, you know, but sort of like the old chicken and the egg sort of situation there, that if we had a master plan ordinance on the books, be it targeted for the Portland Road District, though, like I said, I'm just using it because it's in my backyard, though, it's also the most practical, realistic place for continued economic growth, as well as residential growth, that's not, wouldn't impede on people's legitimate and strong concerns about growth within the downtown, regardless of what the comprehensive plan says. If we had a master plan development on the books, would it not engender more a certain different type of developer to say, hey, if Saco has it on the books, maybe I should be looking in there, as opposed to the folks that we're getting, which invariably has become warehouses and storage facilities, things of that nature? I'm just asking rhetorically, as a professional, what would your opinion be on that?
I'm not really sure, Counselor Gunn. By and large, in my experience, master plan development is really more of a process than a sort of goal. And in my experience with it is, it's a, it's a tool by which you can attract larger transformative projects in certain areas by essentially bundling together some carrots and sticks and providing some of the direction that might otherwise be lacking from your ordinance. So things like street layout or certain specific utility provisions and things like that. But in order to attract those transformative projects, you usually would want to have some understanding of what the market will bear, you know, within a certain timeframe, and understand what, what sticks you might need to bake into that ordinance in order to attract it. And that usually means allowing things that your underlying zoning does not. So what we, what have we been seeing on, for permitting along the Portland Road corridor? Apartments and storage units are the 90%. And of that, I'd say more than half of it is self-storage. And as I mentioned a moment ago, I've heard directly from planning board members, the notion that that probably wasn't what was envisioned when Portland Road zoning district was, was created. So we're actively working on that right now as sort of a prelude to a master plan development or a more comprehensive, you know, Portland Road Route One corridor revisioning process. The scope of that could be really big or not so big, depending on what the city's goals are. And that, in my view, is probably the most difficult thing to articulate about a project like that. You know, I, as I think we demonstrated with your solar zoning amendment that you looked at earlier this evening, when we do have a clear understanding of what your goals are, we can get to work very quickly. We're not reinventing the wheel here. So, anyway, just wanted to throw that out there. And I do realize that master plan development, Portland Road zoning, is far more complex than, you know, coming up with some zoning standards for, you know, backyard solar facilities. But I hope you got my, you get my point.
Jason, if enacted as written, how many projects would potentially cease that was started after September 1st that would be incorporated into this moratorium?
I don't know offhand. I think the relationship of the moratorium to actual project vesting is something that we would want legal professionals to weigh in on. I know vested rights rules vary from state to state. And as you know, I've not worked in Maine long enough to really learn all the intricacies of that. We don't have many, so we do what's called, for those of you who may not know, we do sort of a pre-application process that we call sketch plan review. And that's one of the ways in which we provide advice for property owners or developers before they spend money hiring, you know, paying consultants to do detailed design work for their projects. And I think over the last six months or so, we've probably had, I'd say, not much more than a handful of projects that would potentially be delayed by this moratorium. And then if it were to come to light that the moratorium would impact projects that have already submitted site plan or preliminary plan review, we could get a more accurate number, but we're probably looking at another half dozen or more.
Thank you. Any further questions for City Planner Garnum? Counselor McPhail?
I know that, no fault of yours, and you came in right at the end of the Long Range Planning Committee, which I am a member of with Counselor Archer, I know that the plan of the new committee going forward was that we were going to continue meeting. I know this summer, a couple emails went out asking for dates. It was not a large response, could be summertime or whatnot, but is that, couldn't we make that a priority, that we get our team back together, especially now where the comp plan has been enacted and approved by the state? And it is official, I believe. Correct? Am I?
Go ahead.
Nope. If I'm...
So the Long Range Planning Committee is required to meet at least twice a year. And you're right, I have tried several times to schedule a meeting. It turns out, those attempts were premature because, as you just noted, the state is taking far longer than anticipated.
Okay, so we have not gotten...
We have not, we have not received review comments from the state. I checked in with the reviewers about a month ago, and it sounded like, optimistically, we might hear from them next month. That was, we were supposed to get their comments back by, I don't know, sometime in August. So clearly, they're short-staffed or something. But, so yes, we intend to, or I intend to, schedule a Long Range Planning Committee as soon as we get that comprehensive plan back in front of us. It's just taking a lot longer than expected.
Yes.
And I do hope to get a better response next time, and I have asked for any advice or input on how to do that, make it more fun. I don't know if we need to buy donuts or, you know, show some cartoon shorts before the meeting or something. the meeting or something, but, or, you know, just make sure we don't schedule it on the night of a big football game, but anyway, I'm all ears.
Because I do know that a lot of the concern, you know, written out through this, are issues that, yes, as one of the counselors, it could be the responsibility of the Long Range Planning Committee to focus that, not necessarily the Planning Board or others' group, once we have that all adapted. And again, like you said, getting our goals, our goals are based on the comp plan, and when the new council came in at the beginning of the year, we set our goals. So, we do, it's a matter of both groups, council and as a long-range, taking those goals that were set in the comp plan and redoing them and enforcing them.
Yeah, and that's exactly why I made efforts to reach out to the Long Range Planning Committee so that we could start working on goal articulation, because I agree.
Any further questions for Jason? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been observing and listening to all of you throughout this one topic item, and we were debating it on the floor like it was set in stone. This is new business. This is a proposal by one counselor with no feedback from this council, at all, because this was the first time we saw it at the Diaz. We, this is some of the best debate I've seen on an issue. I've heard both sides, and I've agreed to the, to those who are opposed and those who tend to lean forward, and I also agreed to some of the statements made by the mayor. We're not even, we're discussing, not even discussing this. There was some new information presented to me from initially, I was on board, but I heard some opposing opinions. This is what we do with action items. We have literally debated this like it's an action item, however, we haven't given it a chance to go forward at all. This document presented by one counselor is, any of the numbers he uses can be considered arbitrary. We can make eight twenty, we can make eight fifteen, we can make eight two, we can do what we can through amendments, through the right process, once it's on an action item. There are many items that I do disagree with. I don't like the idea of a sixty day, uh, sorry about that, a six-month moratorium. I'd rather see it as a three-month moratorium with the extension if needed. Again, there are many issues that we're aware of, and this is one attempt to try, but we haven't even got to the point where I can reach out to staff on an action item. You know that with staff, when a counselor asks for an action item, you get a quicker response, you get a more detailed response, it gets on their radar. This was just new business, it falls under a discussion, and that's why I want to push this forward, is I do want to have, I'm for it for some cases, and you just heard where I'm against it. I want to debate more the retroactivity in this. If I remember correctly, when we talked about the moratorium, I considered, I didn't consider the retroactivity, I believe it still went through, because I was considering fairness. This is not a document set in stone, it's a one proposal that hasn't gone through the process. What I like to see is when there's an action item, that's where you debate, if you want to kill it, then you kill it then, or I take my information that I learned from meeting one, meeting two with the public hearing, and make my final conclusions at meeting three. If we don't do that, I'm not going to have the full information I need to do this. Again, this is just one proposal by one counselor. We, I heard some great debates from each counselor and the mayor who spoke, I heard some things that I liked. It doesn't give me a chance to amend this, as that may be fit, and as you know, the amendments have to be approved by the body. So, we can't even have these discussions on how to improve the first time this body's seen this document without it going forward, and that's why I want it forward, because what's the harm of debating this out? If you have your convictions, good, they're going to be the same, correct? I hope so. If not, mine are, my convictions are not the same, they've kind of changed in some aspects, and I want more information. I want to split this forward so I can better understand what's going on, better understand what Counselor Hatch was proposed, and amend it as we see fit. Earlier today, we talked about the plan not being perfect and it needs to be, it needs to be discussed. This document's not perfect, I think it needs to be discussed. We talk about the comp plan and how it's changing and how we're applying it to a pre-pandemic standard? We haven't had ability to talk about that. Is the comp plan that was originally proposed the same as a post-pandemic Saco? This will help us, and again, I'm not going to debate, I'm debating, let's debate it. That's, I'll talk about the debate later, because I don't want to take up more time than I need, but let us debate it. We've done great today, I'm actually quite proud, hearing the left, sorry, I say left and right, that is incorrect, hearing the proponents and opponents. Continue it, we'll talk about it again, but give council the chance to actually ask staff, when it's an action item, for information to make a better decision. Again, all of you who spoke, I agreed with you and I disagreed with you. I'm talking about the proponents as well, there's certain things that I disagree with. But, that's all I'm asking, is let's debate it, what's the harm? Thank you.
Counselor Johnston, then Counselor Berman.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree with Counselor Archer's assessment of this, I certainly didn't view this as a final debate on this, I would certainly have more to say, but I would say that I think that Counselor Hatch has introduced an ordinance, and by charter, it is to move forward, period. Now, you can get the city solicitor to weigh in on that, but the way I read charter, it seems clear to me that any counselor can introduce an ordinance, which he has in writing, so it should move to the next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Counselor Archer's comments. I appreciate the quality of this debate and share your enthusiasm for them. I do have some concerns that when this gets on the agenda, especially with the retroactive nature, there'll be a number of developers who currently have projects under review that will become quite concerned just by the nature of the debate, and that will take up city time and staff efforts. There will also be a number of developers who are considering where to put their projects, and knowing that a moratorium is up for debate may affect their choices, too. Putting this on the agenda is not without harm, it will affect current development, it will affect future development, it will affect the way the city is perceived by those considering doing such work with Saco. The discussion itself will have effects.
I would just say that, just remember, as you're looking at this and looking at moving this forward, one, I see this as a moratorium, not an ordinance, but two, we will get city solicitor to look at that and review it, as Counselor Johnston has asked, but the very nature of what you're trying to propose in the moratorium is to lessen the burden on the city planner, to start the process to talk about a new zoning ordinance or a new zoning ordinance revision. So, just by putting it on the agenda, you're taking up more of planning's time when they're supposed to be doing other things and trying to get to, to us, what the things that you're asking them to do. So, again, by putting this on the agenda, it does have some detriments, because city staff will have to develop time for that, and that's just, that's just so everyone's aware, that we're now tasking the Planning Department with more work, even though we said that the whole purpose of this is to lessen the burden of them because they can't get some of the stuff done that you're looking to do, so just be mindful of that. Counsel Archer?
My intent of this is not to necessarily lessen work, but to actually improve the, prove how, again, improve or relook at, reassess how we look at growth in Saco. That's my true. It's not to reduce work by any means, it may add work, that's correct, but if it adds work now, that leads to less work in the future, I think overall for the city, that's not a bad option either. Thank you.
And just remember with planning, and just like the fire and police, if you're going to add work, prepare to add staff to the Planning Department to help out with anything you're tasking them to do.
Counselor Gunn?
Just to piggyback on what you and both Counselor Archer said, that's why I advocate more of a, sort of a step-by-step constructive approach based on the individual workshop items that Counselor Hatch outlined, I mean, you saw it tonight, again, we're just having a discussion about having a discussion, but bringing the city planner up here and talking about master plan development, we got everybody in this room on this same page about where master plan development is as a priority in the city. It's lower than I certainly thought it was, was, and hoped it would be, though, but in terms of, you know, other issues like impact fees or holders of a contract zone accountable for how they conduct their business and meeting their obligations, I mean, those are the practicalities, and like I said, if we're going to have, staff time is going to be consumed, we can consume it by the actual practical thing, practical matters that are at hand as opposed to any some sort of blanket moratorium. I think we can, it's, again, it's the old walk and chew gum at the same time type of situation. We all, we can go down the list, and we can make our own lists and agree on the things that need to be fixed, and we can basically then turn to the mayor and the city administrator or the staff and say, we want this on the agenda to talk about, we want a master plan development, we want contract zone enforcement on the agenda, and we can do it. And I think that would be a more practical use of the time, because we can actually fix the problems, we're all kind of just talking around with a moratorium, we can actually fix the things going forward. That was, that's my reason for the approach, it's not some sort of just blanket opposition to a moratorium, it's more of, well, let's, you know, let's actually dive in, rather than just, you know, put the moratorium and hope that staff will, you know, come around to us and fix it, though, because history tells us that has not been the case. Thank you.
Any, any further comments on this item? Is there a council that wishes to, how does a council wish to proceed on this item? Not asking for a vote, but it seems that council is pretty split on the item. We will get legal opinion, as I said, and if it needs to move forward, then we will move it forward for a first reading, maybe the October 3rd or perhaps the October 17th to give planning time to review all the information and come back and provide you with a presentation, if that's the case. But is there significant?
Mr. Mayor?
City Administrator?
From a staff perspective, it's not clear there's any sort of consensus here, so I think there needs to be a direction of a majority, that there's consensus to move this forward, or as you suggest, we can get a legal opinion of if it needs to be placed on a future agenda anyway, but at least in my time here, we have always operate under, with new business, if there's consensus or some sort of, you know, majority consensus, move it forward, but that seems to be, at least in my opinion, not clear right now. So, I think there needs to be more consensus of the council, or it's, or we hold it, and as you suggest, we find further legal counsel.
We will consult legal counsel, and this might be a new business item to discuss, again, once we get legal counsel opinion and/or be it on the agenda in accordance with the rules. There's no objection, that will be how we'll proceed. So, hearing no objection, that's how we will proceed. Moving on to item 11, administrative updates, City Administrator Canrath?
Thank you. Our community satisfaction survey closed last week, and we're happy to report, we received a strong response from our community, and data analysis underway. We received a great total of 931 completed surveys in a city of 20,000, that is on par with national surveys done by our consultant, the Center for Research in Public Policy. So, thank you to everyone who took time to share their thoughts with us on the survey. The city is scheduled to receive our initial report by Friday, September 30th, and we'll be inviting Brooke Mitchell, who's the president of the Center for Research in Public Policy, to give a formal presentation on the results at an upcoming city council meeting. This information will be especially helpful, of course, as we look to make further policy decisions into the future. I want to especially thank our partners, the in-shore we reached, community members who prefer to take their paper copies of the survey or do not have transportation to pick one up. This includes the Saco Scoop and Saco Main Street, the Dyer Library, age-friendly Saco's office at the community center, and others. I also want to recognize the work of the communications staff and all city staff who took part in crafting the survey, and we overall received a very strong result, so thank you to everyone. Just an update from the Corks' office, our absentee ballot count so far is 717. Ballots have been ordered and staff has been secured for in-person absentee voting, starting on October 11th here at, City Hall will be available also. Our employee appreciation launch will be this Thursday. Of course, all city of Saco employees are invited, encouraged, and welcome to attend. It'll be at the Public Works Facility, again, this Thursday, 11:30 to 1:00. For the public, that also means from 11:30 to 1:00, City Hall will be closed to allow customer-facing employees the opportunity to participate. Lastly, I just want to recognize two firefighters, Connor Redlin and Nicholas Brown, who recently obtained their paramedic license, both newer to our department and progressing nicely, so congrats to those two on their recent achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Canrath on his update? Moving forward, brings us to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make council aware that earlier today, I sent a request to the administrator for a budget amendment of $50,000 to replace the current play structure at Fairfield School, Pepperell Park. It's in significant state of disrepair, and it's about 25 years old. I've discussed this with the Parks and Rec Director, I've had the last several years, several requests from school staff, parents, PTO, to address the issue, so at our last meeting, the advisory board meeting, that was voted upon unanimously, so I would like to get this on this next upcoming agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I too, I need to give an update to the council. About a week and a half ago, I met with Path and Charities just to get a general overview of the operations at Comfort Inn, referring to the refugees as former homeless veterans advocate, I was just generally interested as an individual, and just wanted to see how operations were going. You all are more than welcome to outreach them, to schedule your own tour and to get a general understanding of the operations and the needs of that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council discussion and comment?
Just a plug for the Saco Arts Commission that is accepting proposals for a new, for new murals on some of the boxes, so please look into that through the Saco Arts Commission and help keep that program going. With that, that completes council discussion and comment, brings us to item 13, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman, any discussion? Roll call to adjourn, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to adjourn at 8:53 PM. Have a great evening, everyone.[1727.76]